Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you take the roll?
Yes, sir. Alderman Cox.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Notariano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Chairman, you have a quorum. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'd accept the motion for the approval of the September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five Committee mini minutes.
So moved, Chair.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Alderman Gregory. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Before we start the meeting, if I could, I would like to ask for just a moment of silence. We've had some death in our surrounding community while it was not in our corporate limits. It is within our community. And I'd just like to take the moment of silence and just recognize those families. And just with understanding that life is precious for us all, and at any given time, it can all be taken away from us. So I'd just like a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right, thank you. I'll accept the favor. See, Madam Treasurer, would you please present your Treasurers' report?
Thank you, Chair. The Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of September. The beginning balance is sixty-two million, five hundred, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We took in total receipts of twenty-three million, one hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars, with total disbursements of twenty-six million, one hundred ninety-one thousand, eighteen dollars, which left the Corporate Ending Balance Fund at fifty-nine million, five hundred, ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Seven million, five hundred, sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and six dollars was the ending ARPA fund balance. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Mr. Clerk?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes? Are there any presentations, Mr. Clerk?
Yes. CWLP.
It's our committee, CWLP Subcommittee meeting tonight.
Well, I'm just going to kick this off. Basically, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Chi, who's in charge of, you know, of our kind of our smart city type technologies, and talk about EV chargers and how we're moving forward with that grant right now, and eventually going to bring an ordinance to you soon with the charging rate, but discussing locations for the chargers and some good stuff here, I think, on that forefront. And then also Mike Gorsick, who's the Assistant Electric Vision Manager, will kind of go over some of our Energy Services Offices programs that we have, and kind of update you with some of that stuff, and then I'll briefly talk about IRP stuff at the end real quick, too.
Doug, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. So Doug, I'd sent you quite a few questions. Are you going to be able to touch on most of those?
Yeah, I'll touch on some of those. Yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're tracking the ones that maybe don't get answered in this meeting so we can follow up with them.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Like Doug said, my name is Tom Chi. Had the opportunity to meet most of you, work with some of you as well. So I just want to, I gotta do the clicker, too.
Equipment doesn't work here, is it?
That would help.
There you go.
Okay, so Springfield's Electric Vehicle Community Charging Program. This project leverages grant funding in the amount of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, sixty-four dollars, and local matching funds for a total project budget of seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. We started this project, preparing for this project, back in twenty twenty-three by building a site selection framework, preliminary engineering, and also issuing an RFP ahead of any, in advance of any grant funding being available. So any and all federal funded projects have to be Build America by America compliant, otherwise known as BABA. So we've made sure that we've selected pedestals and electric vehicle chargers, charging models that are BABA compliant. So there are three types of electric vehicle chargers. Level one and level two are AC chargers. Level one has an output of one to two kilowatts. Level two has an output of six to nineteen kilowatts. And then DC fast chargers have outputs of fifty to three hundred and fifty-plus KW, but those require significantly higher investment. The chargers that we've selected for this project are eleven point five kilowatt, level two chargers. They deliver an average of twenty-five to thirty-five miles of range per hour of charge. So we're in the stages of finalizing a proposed utility-owned EV charging station rate that we will be presenting to council here shortly for consideration and codification into City Code Chapter fifty. We came, the rate was derived from CWLP's General Service Rate forty and includes factoring in blended seasonal energy costs, average fuel adjustments costs, payment processing fees, and realistic assumptions for utilization, maintenance replacement, and project lifespan. The cost also recovers reasonable operating and maintenance costs to sustain this network. And we wanted to ensure that the rate was designed to be competitive with other level two charging stations here in Springfield. So this project, we've got forty charging ports located across nine sites. We focus on three criteria for site selection. We prioritize locations needing minimal infrastructure upgrades to keep the capital costs reasonable and speed of deployment. We also use anonymized mobile geolocation data to map driving patterns and dwell times in order to place these chargers where they're likely going to be used. And then we also wanted to emphasize sites that added charging stations and these ports in historically disadvantaged neighborhoods. So the result is going to be a balanced network that encourages resident and visitor EV owners to visit and shop here in Springfield. And then in the next five slides, we'll take a look at the proposal locations. And then most of these port locations have been finalized and approved by IFA and DOT, but there are a few port locations where we are awaiting final approval and/or site host agreement. So it's hard to see, but the light green dots on the map are where these ports are going to be located. So this is our downtown EV charging map. We've got twenty-four ports spread across five sites. Next slide is the University of Illinois in Springfield. We've got four ports. And then Freedom Drive, we've got four ports. It's hard to tell, but this is in front of the shopping center by Crumble Cookies. And then Wabash Avenue, we've got four ports. It's in a parking lot just southeast of the White Oaks Mall. And then finally, we've got four ports at Chatham Square Center. And with that, I will pass it over to Mike.
Hang on, I think, Sir, do we have a couple of questions? Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you. Good job, Tom.
Thank you.
So I got a couple of questions for you. So, you know, I have an electric car, and a level two will take a long time to charge. So will we require, I always charge at level three because it maybe is around thirty-five to thirty-seven minutes, and that's with me being close to Eagle on the floor. So with level two, will we require people to stay with their vehicle, or they could just drop it off and then come back and pick it up?
So our intention is to allow these EV owners to spend time at the surrounding businesses and things of that nature, or visit sites, et cetera.
That was going to be my next, when I was looking at the map for downtown, I liked the locations that was chosen because when I go to Walmart, it's four in Bloomington, and I just go on Walmart, go shop, and come back out. By the time, it's time for me to come and pick up my vehicle for people. The other one I had, sorry, I was writing on each page for you. How much would it cost for us to get level three chargers, even if we slowly graduated into just having one at each station?
So that's a hard question to answer. There's a lot of infrastructure upgrades that may need to happen before DC fast chargers could be installed. So anywhere, I mean, you're looking at anywhere from maybe like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for four ports, all the way up to one point five million?
Expensive. The only other concern I had when I looked at the locations for downtown, so can you go back to that slide that had like the old Capitol and the Y block?
Yes.
Just that one. So on the Y block, it will be just lined up along the street?
Yeah, so a lot of the downtown locations are existing parking spots that we're going to convert to EV charging.
The only reason I ask is because when I go now to park, you have it where it can be one side going in and then the other side, so they're like compact.
Yep.
But on here, it's going to look a little bit different because it's just on the street. Did we consider like Fourth and Washington where we had a parking lot that we just redid and the city owned?
Yeah, so we did, we took into a lot of, we took a lot of things into consideration. And I appreciate what you said about different sides, because one of the things that we considered was when vehicles are driving, these charging, charging port locations on vehicles can be on the front, the back, the front side, front right, front left.
Yeah.
It could be everywhere. So we tried to ensure that all these parking spot locations that we had selected, there would be, it was an even mix of charging ports that would be on both the driver's side and the passenger's side.
Okay, and you just answered it because I was going to say some of the ones I've seen, they're on the front left, but then there's some that's on the right side, too, and in the back.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of thought that went into this.
I'm helping you out because I drive one. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So these charging stations at Dirksen and South Grand County Mark, those ours?
They are not.
Those are private?
That's correct.
Okay, do you know what level they are?
Yes, those are DC fast chargers.
Okay, they are the fast chargers. So, what, so Stevenson and Dirksen are anywhere along Stevenson, south of my, in my ward. I mean, I'm glad I got them, don't get me wrong, I'm not complaining because Rockford just told me he doesn't have any. But I need to, I'm thinking about asking for this second set of them, because I think it's seven, seven or eight at South Grand and Dirksen, right at the County Market there. And I think it's important that we spread them out, you know? And I know some of you guys might not got your first ones yet, but I'm thinking south, like Capital City, or even somewhere on Dirksen, if you would please consider that the next round, if you would, please.
Absolutely. Yes, we, sure. So we did apply for, let me back up just a step, so there's two separate types of grant funding.
Tom, could you talk into the mic, please?
Yes, sir. There's two types of grant funding.
Yes.
That was available through the NEVI program, the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program. There was community charging.
Okay.
Which focuses on your level two chargers. And then there was alternative fuel corridor, alternative fuel corridor charging. So within one mile off of what they designate as an alternative fuel corridor, which I-55 would be.
One, yeah.
Would be one. So we had actually applied for one at Capital City Shopping Center, and we were not approved.
Hmm. They didn't say why?
They did not.
Okay. Well. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Tom, real quick question. A few years ago, I was approached by a national, or excuse me, a statewide association that happens to be located in the heart of downtown, which is the fifth ward.
Manufacturers, yes, it is.
And they had inquired about potentially putting, and we've talked to CWLP about it, putting some charging stations over by the old Sangamo Club, Illinois Manufacturers Association area.
Okay.
Is, and I haven't looked there lately because I don't follow this on a daily basis, but is there a charger over there now?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
I think that was third and.
And Alderman Donlin, sorry, Chair. They wanted to put it right on the side of the building and asked just for two parking spaces over there to do it as well.
Okay.
Like on that diagonal with.
Broadway.
Yes, Broadway.
I just wanted to make sure that, and I spoke with you about it, and you've been an advocate for it, because I haven't followed up with it, but if that's not a part of this, it probably needs to be in the future because.
Sure.
They have users, for sure.
Okay, noted. I'll make sure I take that down.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Donlin, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Gregory.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair. My only question was, I'm happy to see Lincoln Home in Y block area, of course, University's Illinois Springfield, great, Freedom Drive, great, Wabash, great, a lot of traffic through there. Can somebody educate me on why we putting some in Chatham?
The Chatham.
Chatham Square?
Yeah, so when we looked at that geolocation data, there was quite a bit of traffic from outside of Springfield to that area. And the, and like I said, one of the things that we considered was prioritizing sites where infrastructure upgrades would be at a very minimal cost to us, and that was one of the locations that was available.
I understand your logic with it, I just, I don't know, I have a problem with, you know, getting a grant to benefit the city of Springfield and we putting them in other municipalities.
Chatham Square. Right, Chatham Square Center.
Somebody educate.
On Wabash. On Wabash, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Derek, you know what?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Not Chatham, yes.
Thank you.
It's city of Springfield.
I don't go out there that much.
Alderman Gregory, Alderman Gregory, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Alderwoman Notariano.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you for this presentation, very informative, very exciting developments. I am a little disappointed that there aren't any central city, MacArthur Boulevard, charging And I have to ask, the four ports at University of Illinois Springfield, nothing against them, but is there going to be some cost sharing, or?
So they are providing us easement and right-of-way for that location.
Okay.
Yep.
Seems very generous of us, I'll say.
Now, all of the revenue still comes to the city of Springfield, there's no revenue sharing.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. And then the municipal complex ports, are those going to be focused on employee parking or visitor parking?
Visitor parking, it'll be along the street, along Monroe Street.
Okay, great, yeah, it's impossible to tell on my little map.
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, not your fault, just the nature of PowerPoint, right? So were there any points along the MacArthur corridor that were considered, or is this maybe like something I can expect in a Phase Two?
If, in future plans, I will make sure that MacArthur Boulevard is included.
Okay, okay, but there was no data to show that.
From the geolocation data that we had access to, not as much as some of these other locations that were cited.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you so much, thank you, Chair.
Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, so, so on this data, was there no traffic in the north end with electric vehicles or something?
So, on, on.
Too many potholes, Larry.
Well, they're getting fixed, have you been down Ninth Street? It's getting there. Give it time, it's been ten years, Brad, thank you.
I will tell you that along Sangamon Avenue, there were some sites that we had looked at, but from a capital cost, the infrastructure upgrade required on Sangamon would have been quite a bit higher than all of these other projects.
So I guess my question is, and so we kicked the can down the road again, so you need infrastructure, we get electric vehicles, but if we need things done out there, why not put the money towards, towards the places that need the help outside of electric vehicles to upgrade it? Instead of, instead of say, well, you know, we're going to put chargers in, but they don't have the power to carry it out there, so we're just going to skip the north end of town. You know, you got Williamsville, you got Riverton, you've got Athens, you've got all kinds of places that need, you know, electric charging. So I don't understand the logic behind, the infrastructure's not there. So it's just like this lead water line. For fifty years, we've known it's lead, but we wait fifty years to get it replaced. I don't, I don't get it.
Thanks, Mike.
So anyway, thanks anyway, got new road, though.
You done, Alderman Rockford? All right. Alderwoman Conley.
Just real briefly, because I want to follow up, I would also like to say, I'd like to see something along MacArthur, but probably, again, speaking of Alderman Rockford's infrastructure comments, not until after MacArthur is done. And I don't know when IDOT will finally get us to that point, but do you know if that is part of the MacArthur project that IDOT's looking at, is including charging stations?
That I do not know.
No, I don't remember, so I was just hoping.
I'm actually.
Tom has so many other answers.
Alderwoman Notariano just kind of introduced me to the MacArthur project here, just this, this is earlier this week, so, but yeah, I had not heard of that. But to the point of this program, too, it's, you've got to remember, this is kind of more of a pilot project for us. This is our first entry into this, so we can't cover the entire city, we got to go with what we can get up and running as fast as we can. That's what really got us the grant. I think this is one of the larger grants that they've actually handed out, from what I heard, so, which is pretty, pretty, pretty good, impressive part on Tom's work here. And I think that, you know, hopefully we'll have more grants in the future, and if it's real successful, maybe we can be able to do it on our own, too, as well, so we'll see.
And thank you, Doug, because that was actually my next question. I also, in my day job, I'm doing some federal purchasing. How, what is the, do you know what the difference in cost is if we don't use federal funds to buy a charging station? Like to Alderwoman Purchase was talking about the DC chargers, the level threes.
Yeah, so typically what we've seen when we have to be BABA compliant, we're seeing a, can be up to twenty percent surcharge.
Okay, so it's potential, we'll get this pilot project out, see how it rolls out, and what kind of the, what level of engagement we have, and then look to maybe using some city funds that don't have, could have maybe a twenty percent cost savings. Thank you very much, Tom, this is really good, really exciting to see this coming forward.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the thought that went into it. Just real quickly, because I don't have an electrical vehicle, what kind of, what is a, sort of a standard rate that you're seeing for comparable markets to Springfield?
As far as charging rate?
Yes, sorry, yeah.
So I will say locally, in Springfield, we're seeing between thirty and thirty-five cents per kilowatt hour.
Okay, so that's kind of the range we're looking at to be competitive, you think? I'm not asking you to commit to a number, just, we're going to be competitive with local rates.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Round two, Alderwoman Purchase.
I know, sorry about that. Last question, Tom, since I was listening to my, a lot of my colleagues ask you these questions. Can you educate us on how you look for the sites, and then what will progress look like? Will you come back and tell us, not during budget time, but a little bit before budget, of how it's doing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like at least twice a year, so if you are asking for another grant, but I'm listening to everyone say how we couldn't move around the entire city, and some is not in everybody's ward, how did you choose these locations?
Yeah, so there was a lot, like I said, that went into selecting these sites, and like I mentioned, the geolocation data using like your mobile phone device, mobile phone data, being able to see where people were coming from and where they were going, so you could tell where their home zip code was, where they were going afterwards, whether they were going to a retail establishment, whether they were going home, whether they were going wherever. So that was, that was the primary driving force, was making sure that we were going to be putting sites where these would be used and not just sitting around. The second part of your question, I think, the reporting afterwards, absolutely, we can, whatever the council wants us to do, we can definitely provide. This is grant funded, so there's a lot of reporting that goes into it. We submit quarterly reports, so absolutely, we can.
If you can send us that, I'll just end with saying it is definitely needed here in Springfield. When I first got my car, I had to go out to Cadillac to charge fast and then wind up purchasing for my own garage. Everywhere else, we have, Chuck was just saying Shields has chargers, it's only for Tesla. County Market has chargers, it's only for Tesla, so we have a universal charger that's coming that can fit multiple cars, so it is something that's definitely needed, and I'm very optimistic about Doug's suggestion that maybe we can do it on our own at some point.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. So I guess the other big thing that we need to start looking at is, is our infrastructure upgrade overall, because if we had a block of people, what you're saying is if we had, let's say, ten houses on a block that had home chargers, would the infrastructure be able to support it? If they're all charging at the same time, I, you know, I mean.
It depends what levels they are, right? Level one's not really an issue, level two's not really.
Most of them would be level two.
But level three, you know, I don't think that people are going to be able to afford level three for the most part.
No, that's crazy.
So, now, that could change in the future, technology could change, you know, but it's definitely still a concern, though, I think, you know, when you're, when you're looking at, you know, how many people could be adding chargers, you know, maybe the quantity of chargers to, you know, that might change things as well. But it's, we don't know the adoption rate at all, you know?
Right.
People like to put, put things out there, what it might be, and those things haven't materialized at all, so.
Right, well, I just, I know, you know, I agree with, that we probably do need, or we need to get the infrastructure at least out by Walmart and Lowe's and that out there because they should have some level, level two or probably level three because they're close to the highway, so people can get off and, and, and charge. I like, I do like the way this program is structured to where people, because twenty-five miles or whatever, in thirty minutes, that's not very much, but it, so it gives them an hour or two, probably a couple hours to do the shopping or whatever, so it, that's a good mix. But, yeah, I think that we need to kind of really start looking at our infrastructure, though, with the anticipation of, you know, I know that, I know that right now, you're not seeing as big of a push for the electric cars because they just simply can't go, go as far as what people want, and the length of it, of being able to charge, that's a, that's a drawback. But they are, they are out there, and, you know, we need to accommodate people, but, and that starts, we need to really start looking at the infrastructure to at least get some of them.
As they do their distribution type studies, they, they'll be considering stuff like that.
Thank you.
Our final speaker in second round, Rock.
Second round, yes.
Alderman Rockford.
Doing your studies, these studies, when people, if some, let's say Walmart wants to put in five, ten char, you know, charging units, do you, do they come to you? Do they have to put in like a bid? Are we, are we able, is our infrastructure able to handle the shopping center if they put ten in? I mean, it's, I don't, I don't know what, if fifty people buy electric vehicles, do you tell them to go to the west side to charge your car because you, the north side can't control, can't handle the juice?
Your businesses that are coming to us for adding, you know, a large, like say if they added five level three chargers and they needed a different power source, you know, they're going to come to us, they'll pay for that.
Right, right.
And then we'll install the infrastructure for them, and if it's fifty grand or a hundred grand, whatever it is, you know, that's, they're willing to pay that if they want to.
Well, and again, Doug, my question is, is we pay for it. We're taxpayers, we're ratepayers, man, we pay for.
Well, they, they would pay for it.
I understand that, but if I want to get an electric car and I need a charging station for fifty people. station for 50 people to get cars, and you're, and you're saying, well, we don't have the, the infrastructure to handle that, you know, you have to go somewhere else to charge. I, I don't understand the, the logic behind putting these out, you know, we're getting electric cars, but you're telling me I gotta go elsewhere to charge my car, you know?
Well, I mean, everybody can, you can get your own charger, right?
I know it's a lower, lower grade, grade charger, you know?
You can get your level one, level two, and get it installed in your house. Um, because we do have like, uh, you know, when it comes to level two charging, we do have a, a separate rate that you can get for that and have a, you know, a, a different meter installed, so it tracks it. Um, so.
Yeah.
We have options like that. And, uh, but again, you know, level three chargers, people just aren't going to be installing those all over the place. They're just too expensive.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I under, I understand that, but, but we're putting four and five in, is, so downtown's able to handle that and, and, you know, the west side, wherever you're putting these, they're, they're able to handle this, huh? These four and five? I'm sorry?
No, we have them.
Oh, well, no, yeah, the north end don't. Okay, that's all I'm saying.
Well, they can shop at JC Penney's, they can go to County Market while they're fun.
Okay, okay. We'll talk afterwards.
It always got to go long.
Anyway, I, I get it. I just, uh, uh, you know, again, kick the can down the road. Thank you guys.
Alderwoman Conley.
Just real quick, um, Tom, I realized, and I apologize, I didn't ask for the timeline of this project.
So we, I, I'm glad you asked that actually, because I, I didn't get to, to, uh, C W L P's horn. Um, we anticipate having all of these completed by the end of this fiscal year. So we will be the first project in Illinois completed by this grant.
So, and so we're talking, these will be in this, this summer, we'll be seeing them, maybe? Or no, the end of this current fiscal year that we're in?
Yes, that, this current fiscal year.
Oh, that's, well done. That's great.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking forward to that.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no more questions. Mr. Brown, are you still, your team still has some?
Yeah, I'll, uh.
That's fine, that's fine.
Took, took over.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mike Gorsick, Assistant Electric Division Manager. I'll try and run through some of the information on the, uh, E S O, the Energy Service Office.
Mike, we can't hear you.
Oh, just, yeah, just get closer to the mic, sir. Thank you.
There we go.
There you go.
I get yelling like you always do.
I get yelling.
They got bumped back a bit.
Go ahead, you need help?
There we go. All right, uh, E S O's goal, uh, is to help customers use less energy, less water. Um, they're often the front-facing, uh, department that handles a lot of issues from the customers, so, uh, they have a lot of interaction with, with all of the, uh, the residents. Um, in the next few slides, I'll, I'll go over some of the details of the programs and what E S O offers. Um, so, uh, on the money-back home energy audit, uh, that's one of the most utilized services that we have. Um, this includes, uh, home efficiency, home efficiency assessment, uh, from top to bottom includes blower door tests, um, appliance evaluations, uh, and more. Um, it is surprising to note that most of the older homes, 20 to, 25 to 40% of energy uses, usage is actually air leakage. Uh, so basically your, your energy is going right out your windows or doors or, um, you know, leaks elsewhere in the house. Um, so if somebody, if customers are interested in, in applying for an audit, um, we have the money-back home energy audit. It is, uh, basically a customer call and request, uh, uh, energy audit, and it will be, uh, $25 added to your C W L P bill if you complete anything that is, uh, offered up in the audit to improve your efficiency, um, that 25 within one year, that $25 will be added back, credited back to your bill once you complete that, um, once you complete that audited, uh, efficiency improvement. Um, the next one is, um, so C W L P Helping Homes, uh, this was started in 2009. This is a unique program. Uh, it's specifically offered for low-income homeowners. Uh, homeowners can apply for this program, um, and if they qualify, uh, they'll receive an audit, um, with recommendations. And C W L P actually cover the entire cost of the retrofit from the home audit. Um, you can see some of the, uh, amounts and number of homes that we've covered in the last couple of years. Uh, so that's, that is the Helping Homes portion of it. Um, uh, the energy service rebates, uh, just go over a couple, a few of the rebates for residential customers, uh, high efficiency, the A C heat pump, uh, electric water heater, uh, and also on the water side, the, uh, high efficiency toilets and the, uh, rain barrels. And you can see some of the numbers and values on each one of those. Uh, for the commercial customers, the Energy Services Rebates Assistance offers the, and get this right, uh, City Lights Commercial Lighting Rebate. Uh, so this program focuses on, um, commercial buildings, uh, inefficient lighting such as, you know, fluorescents, replacing those with LEDs, um, you know, to lower costs for them and also, uh, reduce energy use for, for the utility. Um, next, so on the Commercial Technical Assistance Program, which ties into this, um, there'll actually be an, an E S O auditor, uh, that will do a walkthrough, um, on the commercial buildings. Uh, that auditor will pull past data from, um, from those businesses, both electric and water, um, and give a report. Those reports will help the businesses drive to, uh, you know, which, which would best improve their efficiencies or, or the biggest bang for their buck, um, you know, on their expenditures. Um, next is the MySolar program. Um, MySolar, it was actually commissioned in 2018. Uh, currently we got, uh, 155 of the 263 blocks subscribed, um, so we have more blocks available. Uh, if any customers are interested in, in investing in those blocks of MySolar, uh, they can be, you can do that through the C W L P website. Uh, if, um, if anyone would like to contact the Energy Services Offices, here's, here's the contact information. You can also go to the C W L P dot com website and, uh, navigate to it from there.
Thank you. Is that it, Mr. or Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I think Doug has got a couple comments.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll, hold on a minute. I'll try Rihanna.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so the Commercial Technical Assistance Program, um, how much are the commercial, uh, buildings, properties, entities charged?
$4, yeah.
So.
Zero, zero dollars.
They don't have to pay for us to do all this stuff for them? But residents pay $25 for?
Which is, which is credited back.
Okay.
The commercial, the commercial buildings are, are dropping a lot more, uh, of their money, I guess, into those improvements. So, and, and there's not that many, I don't think that, that really take us up on that either, for the most part.
Okay. Just asking, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Um, so the Integrated Resource Plan stuff that, uh, you know, uh, just as an update, the, uh, legislative session is a veto session, uh, this week and then, and I think in, and again, and, and two more weeks. So there is some stuff that's been proposed, um, and we, I, I think it might pass, don't know, um, but we should know by the end of the month, really, what's going to happen there. Um, so then, after that happens, then we're going to start to, to focus our, you know, look at doing an R F P, uh, uh, you know, for the I R P. So a request for proposals for that and designing that. Um, the, uh, and then, so I, I'm thinking that maybe the next utility committee meeting, we might be able to talk that a little bit more, uh, and, you know, a little bit more insight into that. Um, but, you know, essentially, again, you know, the I R P, it's, it's going to look at, you know, all the options on the table, what's economic, you know, what's affordable, um, what's sustainable, you know, what, and, but most of all reliability is going to be the, the, the key. Uh, so we, we want to make sure that all takes place, um, for all the different technologies that we're going to look at, uh, you know, moving forward. Um, nothing should be off the table at this point. Obviously, we're not building new coal, um, but that doesn't need to be really said, but, um, or we know, we're not going to be building a nuclear unit either, so, um, but, uh, absent of those, you know, we'll, we'll look at all the other different technologies, uh, going forward and, um, you know, as far as like the public process, you know, again, just like I'd said, uh, many times before, you know, the last I R P that we did, I think we set a pretty good standard of how you do I R Ps with public process, and we, I can't remember how many meetings we had, we're, we're going to do the same, at least with that, I mean, and so that's, and that's above and beyond what's in the proposal, uh, proposed legislation as well, so, um, you know, we'll continue to do that as well. Um, so I think that covers it probably on the I R P stuff. Um, I think it was one of their questions, it was on carbon capture, um, and, uh, you know, yeah, the, the U of I system, the, the pilot testing, you know, that's, that started. We have not heard, you know, how they're doing. Um, I don't think that we'll hear much, you know, until they're done. Um, so that's, kind of, that's their projects, not ours. They're just, uh, you know, we're, we allowed them the space to, to perform their work on that, so, um.
Yeah, Mr. Brown, we have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Conley.
Uh, well, just, so, um, on the injection, I'm, I'm going to go them backwards. Um, the injection wells, are those still moving forward or the, the borings that were done?
What, what we heard, um, as far as that grant goes, is that that grant is canceled. Um, but I, I haven't seen anything official in writing yet. Um, so we'll see how that, that really is true. I mean, but, uh, yeah, the U of I said that they, uh, were told by the D O E that they're going to cancel the remaining part of the project.
Okay, so, if you could, because there has been interest in that, just follow up, even with an email that we could just kind of bring up at a, at a meeting.
Yep, as soon as we get, uh, more confirmation for sure, then we'll go, go with that.
Okay, and then.
I'll send something out.
Thank you. And then, and then kind of back to the I R P, because again, one of the biggest questions and, and concerns around the I R P is what will that public engagement look like, how it will be focused? Is this going to be an opportunity, because we've been saying it will be, for people to ask questions and have that back and forth and give and take with the utility? Is that your expectation?
Yeah, uh, you know, uh, we would have, uh, you know, whoever vendor we get, you know, the firm that does the I R P will be on board to help with that process, help with that engagement.
Right, but we, we.
Just like the.
So that expectation is going to be built into the R F P, that there will be.
Yes.
A and A that will be capturing questions and some answers?
Comments, everything.
Okay.
Yeah, so there'd be, there'd be different, you don't have to attend the meeting to make a comment either, you can just submit it.
Right.
Yeah, as well, just like we did the last time.
And, um, are you looking at like staggering locations and, and times a day?
Yeah, it, we, I wouldn't, it would not be in this kind of a format. It would definitely be, um, uh, you know, and I, that's too far in advance for me to look at right now.
I'm, I'm just trying to put bugs in your ear.
But we will definitely consider those kinds of things, yes.
Okay, so we can expect.
It'll definitely be a different, different format, different venue.
We'll move it around the city, make it at different times and different days, so that people have.
Um, I, I don't know if we'll have multiple, you know, multiple, multiple meetings of the same thing over and over again, you know, that, that might be too much for the staff, but we'll see.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Oh, no. Um, Alderwoman Conley just asked all of my questions about the level of engagement, but I think too, uh, with me and her being a part of your committee, that we, we constantly get, when will they do a community meeting? And you're giving updates up here, and I'm hearing you say that it's not enough information to kind of pull it together, but it sounds like, do you think all of that will come at one time? So you have multiple things to talk about, because the, what, what Alderma, Alderwoman Conley just stated is just one area, but people have other questions too. Like Doug, sometimes this is a lot to process when you bring up everything that you're doing. Well, we have something that just has a, a community, like forum.
Um, yeah, the I R P process will be, will be, you know, and a lot of those questions are I R P related, so that's where we're going to discuss it. Um, you know, that's where we'll take the time to meet with the community and hear from all the customers, um, because we, we, we want to hear from everybody. Um, so we'll, we'll be planning that and, and making that part of the process to make sure that we have, you know, open house style, uh, type venues for people to come and talk to, you know, us individually and, uh, talk to the experts that we hire, you know, uh, it's thinking it's important that they participate in those meetings and, and actually run some of them.
No, I agree with you, because they're on a contract, so they need to be answering. And I just always say too, Ms. Amber does a good job of getting all the information out and getting it out to the, uh, community too. Sometimes you all even insert, um, certain things in the C W L P bill, so that's good as well too.
Yeah. Then we'll, we'll heavily advertise for that process.
For the reminder, okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep. Just me.
Oh, I'm sure you weren't, oh, there it is. Alderwoman Notorianna.
Thank you, Chair. Um, to sort of piggyback off of what Alderwoman Purchase was saying, um, these presentations are very informative and usually have a, a lot going on, and it would be nice if we could see these prior to the meeting, um, so we could come with questions that are informed and engaged, and also, so the public can see the presentation beforehand, so they can ask their questions to the content of the meeting. Um, because right now, it's sort of a one-way, uh, flow of information, and I don't know, it seems to me that the, this, uh, committee would really benefit from a two-way flow of information. Thank you.
Yeah, and we're, I mean, anytime you have any questions, please feel free to reach out, um, that's not an issue. We'll answer whatever questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, to you and your team for a thorough presentation. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, I hear we have, I understand we have three speakers.
We have three speakers. Donald Hannerhand.
And as, as Mr. Hannerhand comes out, I just, I want to remind new speakers and veteran speakers, please take a look at the stop clock or the stopwatch and the four monitors, um, just reminder, friendly reminder, we'll cut the mic at five minutes and I'll gavel at five minutes, so, Mr. Hannerhand, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, I want to say a few things about electric vehicles, because there's a lot of misunderstanding. First of all, when you plug in to charge at home, it's like turning on a dryer. So if 10 people on your block turn on their dryer, that's the same amount of power that's going to an electric vehicle, sort of. So it's not a huge infrastructure thing to have a level two charger. So, uh, those chargers are relatively slow as we see, so 25 miles in an hour is about what you get. It's not something that local folks are going to run up and hog these chargers. We're not interested in that. We charge at home at night when the rates are very cheap and we don't need to pay 10 times as much as we get charged at home. The DC fast chargers, uh, there are 16 at the, uh, Dirksen, uh, location. There are four at Meyer that are Rivian chargers. There are four at Walmart on South Sixth that are, uh, fast chargers, very fast chargers when they work. Uh, there are 12 fast chargers at Haymakers on West Jefferson. There are four free chargers at Hy-Vee that are level two. There are four free chargers that are level two at 900 North First. Um, so, and there's more. There's, uh, Green Hyundai has public chargers that they allow everybody to use their charge point. Um, some of them are, are free, some of them cost money. And the, the DC fast chargers in town are pretty pricey, uh, 56 cents at Walmart, uh, 48 cents at the Tesla chargers, 63 cents at the Rivian chargers, so, um, they're, they're expensive and people tend to use those only when they're on road trips and we charge at home otherwise. Anyway, I, I'm glad to see that these chargers are being constructed, they're great sites, are being constructed. They're great sites. It's going to encourage visitors, because when you go somewhere and go to a museum, or you go to a historic site, that's ideal for visitors. They plug in, they get, you know, 50 miles of range, they can drive around the whole rest of the day before they go to their hotel. It's excellent. Now, getting to what I came here to talk about, I, with the IRP, is scoping going to be part of our public process? Will the will the public get to participate in the whole scoping of it before it's actually undertaken? And I wanted to point out, it's now cheaper to build wind and solar than it is just to keep burning coal. Not to build a new coal plant or a new gas plant, but to just continue burning coal at an old plant. So that has to be part of the IRP. I'm sure it will be. And coal is dying a relatively quick death. Despite all the whoopla about renewing coal by the current administration, for example, their recent coal lease auctions in Montana and Wyoming garnered practically no interest, even at fire sale prices. No investors think it's viable to invest in coal mining anymore. This underscores the need to plan now for our coal based workforce at Dollman Four to assure preservation of their livelihoods as we transition to clean energy. So this is something that often happens to workers. They get dumped on immediately with no planning, like the workers at at the coal mine up at Elkheart. We need to plan for this now. We've got all the time in the world to do it. There's no excuse not to have a plan in place for our workers who are in the coal plant now, to to transition them to good paying jobs before the proverbial stuff hits the fan. And a word about gas, methane gas, we paid for two studies to determine whether Dollman Four could be converted. They're paid, they're done. We haven't been able to see them. We should be able to find out what the status of those studies is. Why are we not, why are we even exploring those costs when gas prices are even more volatile than the coal industry? My time's about up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanahan. Ms. Clerk?
Jim Applegate.
Good evening. I'm Jim Applegate. I'm a citizen of Springfield and a CWLP rate payer for more than a decade, when I came to serve as first to serve as the executive director of the IBHE. I now serve on the State Quoting Committee for Third Act Illinois. Third Act is an organization of nearly 70,000 elders, 60 and older, who are working to improve our climate and our planet. And I represent Third Act on the Springfield Coalition for Springfield's Utility Future, which I'm sure you're somewhat familiar with. The advantage of a municipally owned power company is that the people own it, and their elected representatives own it. And so I was really heartened to hear all the concern as we move forward with the IRP, to ensure that the people's voice is heard when we develop the plan for Springfield going forward. I hope that those will be interactive. My PhD from the University of Illinois in Communication tells me that interactive meetings are much better finding common ground and solutions than presentational meetings. So I hope they will be as promised there. I do know there's a grant money available, $200,000, that the window for the first set of 200, 200 K is closed, but they're going to reopen it. And I hope that by the time that reopens, we'll be ready to apply and get the 200 K to help us do this plan correctly with an independent, experienced vendor. We're not on the cutting edge of this by any means. Communities all over the country have are doing IRPs. So there are a lot of there are a lot of consultants working with those cities who have a lot of experience and are independent and experts. So I hope we'll we'll have input into how we choose and, as Don said, scope this project so that we come to the best possible conclusions. I'd reiterate something Don said about the gas study. I have two questions about that. They're basically Don's questions, previous speakers as well. Where's the results? We paid for a study. What did it tell us? And the second question is, why are we investigating this anyway? Gas is not, natural gas is not clean energy. In its exploration, delivery, and use, it produces methane. And methane is one of the worst environmental pollutants we have. It is far worse than CO2 in terms of damaging the environment. So I think hopefully as we look forward, we're looking forward to developing with input from the people here, a clean, an energy plan that takes us toward clean energy. A recent article in the New York Post and the Washington Post just yesterday showed that globally, we are almost to the point where clean energy, hydro and solar and wind, will produce more electricity globally than coal. And so I think that's where it's headed. And and we need to be on the cutting edge of that, not only because it will it will keep our energy bills lower, but also because it will produce a healthier Springfield. And I am encouraged by what was said tonight by the council members. Thank you for holding this meeting. I hope there I know there will be more of them and an increased opportunity for people to have a voice as we develop a really healthy, clean, solid, reliable plan for Springfield's energy future that doesn't involve coal ash or waste ponds or methane gas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Applegate. Mr. Clerk?
Ann Logue.
Her first word is electricity.
Just wanted to mention that we still need to have an audit program for renters. We have it for homeowners with the CDO, but the energy audits for renters, we still need that. And there's like 15,000 renters in Springfield. So on to clean energy, and I want to thank CWLP for having this public presentation and that we get to talk a little bit after. I would like to see if CWLP would actually make a commitment that if the IRP demonstrates that clean energy can be affordable and reliable with backup of non renewables, that they would commit to that. And just recently this week, there was an article, or this month, there was an article printed out by both the Texas Energy Power News Letter and the Clean Energy Buyers Association, saying that keeping electric, keeping electricity affordable requires clean energy. States that are generating the most wind and solar power often have lower electricity prices than those relying on more on fossil fuels. The U.S. Energy Information Administration found that 17 of the 22 states producing above average amounts of renewable energy had below average power costs this summer. Iowa's grid is clearly demonstrating that renewables are the solution to lower prices. And Iowa has a 15, 52% of its electricity from wind and solar at an at an average retail price of 11.1 cents per kilowatt hour. It shows how renewables can power affordability with a backup. South Dakota has 52% of its electricity from wind and solar. New Mexico has 49% of its electricity from renewables, and maintaining an average price of 9.9 cents per kilowatt hour. Renewables have proven to be reliable and cost effective sources of power that help stabilize prices as demand grows. The data makes it clear that renewables are not driving higher prices, but are helping hold them down. One thing I want to caution the city on, and I think I saw something from the Growth Alliance, that said was all excited about AI data centers and how that would be like a real great thing for us. You have to be prepared for these data centers, because they use enormous amounts of energy and water. So I think I talked to the mayor recently about that, and she thought it was a good idea. But they need to be required to to provide their own battery storage. And you could, we might even be able to ask them to provide renewable energy along with that. Because if they are stressing out our energy, then that's going to raise our prices here in Springfield, as it has done other places. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. All right, thank you. Next, we have ordinances tabled to remaining committee. Mr. Clerk, would you?
Alvin Carson. Just one quick thing on the data center thing. You know, we've been fully aware of what their impacts are, especially on the on the electric stuff with, so basically, you know, we've been approached by some very large ones. You know, they want like 1,200 megawatts, which is just, I mean, that's crazy for us to even consider. But even something a little bit smaller, you know, we've we've always said that we would have to have some basic, some third party agreement where you buy your energy from somebody else through us, if you're within our footprint. But most of them are locating, you know, outside of us for further electricity needs. So just wanted to make that sure that's clear, though, that, you know, we're, we're not going to be able to attract really data centers very easily, just because of our size that we are, unless we entered into like a third party agreement where our customers have no responsibility in that data center's energy demands. So.
Doug, hang on. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you for coming up. I was gonna, yeah, I think another thing we need to consider, if even the smaller data centers, data centers are looking to Illinois or to just bring, things we need to be looking at is, yes, their energy demand, but that other side of our table, which is that water, and and require more of a reuse water as opposed to, you know, first pass water. They can use gray water. That's not, they're not drinking that water that they're pulling out. That's, you know, part of the cooling for their data centers. So just, it's something we probably need to talk about in the near future. I've also, just as an FYI for you, I've had people ask, what does the city do now that we're in a mild to moderate drought, and it's been sustained for a couple of months here, about, and it's something we need to consider maybe as a future topic for conversation, how are we managing water use from our customers, like the people at the end of my street who water the street every day?
Yeah, I mean, there's ordinances on the books that require conservation once we hit a certain level.
We haven't quite gotten to that yet.
No, we're not, we're not, we're not at that level. I think we're about 2.13 feet down below full pool right now. So.
And thank you, because that was actually the other water follow up question I wanted to ask.
I just looked at that today, actually.
How are we doing? Okay, and that's, that's good to know. But I just, I do also, for the data centers, we want to make sure that any data center looking to locate in Springfield is not getting our our prime drinking water quality standard water, but that there we're encouraging that reuse concept for water supplies, because that is an issue that's popping up a lot across the state. And they don't need, they don't need the good clean stuff. They can.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, I'm sure some of them probably use a mixture of water cooling and air cooling. Unfortunately, if you use air cooling, you're going to use a lot more energy, too. So it's one way or the other. But if you want AI, you're going to have to have something, you know, I mean, it's not, it's not, they're going to have to, we can't create water for them, so.
No, but we could certainly make sure that they don't get our first pass water.
But the energy is is a little different, you know, that's, that's something that we could help with, with third parties, maybe, you know.
Okay. I'm glad, I'm glad. I knew you, I figured you would be on top of things like that. But it's, thank you very much, Doug.
Hang on for a second. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. A couple of the speakers alluded to a completion of the gas study. Would you agree with that, that the gas studies are complete?
No, they're not. There was one that was done, I think that, that they released it. I don't know, it's been a while. But then another one was done, but there, again, it was, it was, I think I've talked about this before here. So essentially, there's other things that need to be considered with that. And, you know, with the plant, they need to finish that part of it to determine, because it's not just what equipment needs to be added, but what things go away. So there's a cost, internal cost, that change and disappear that need to be part of that, that, that input into the IRP. So that's what I want, make sure that they have all the information into the IRP for even that to be considered. And the original, and the original plan for even looking at natural gas, I don't know if you recall, was basically when we were in this kind of dispute with the coal mine, the Viper Mine with Nighthawk Coal, that we needed an alternative solution to try to show them that we're not going to pay your, 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 your high cost of coal that they're trying to force upon us. So that was one of the big things that we were doing with that. And then that changed a force, we know, we didn't need it really for, because Nighthawk basically said that it's either you take the price or leave it. So he went out for bids on a new, new coal contract and found a cheaper place of coal.
So does the utility have a timeline on when you'll have enough information to consider it complete to share with the public and with the citizens?
I mean, when we, when we start doing the IRP process.
It'll be ready by.
We're gonna, we're gonna, well, not maybe at the start, but before, like during that process, it'll be made public, all of that, as a part of the IRP process.
Okay, because I think that's what they're wanting. They need to see the results.
It'll all be made public, yes.
Thank you.
Along with all the other options.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Now, do we have any new ordinances tabled remaining committee? Mr. Clerk, would you please read those ordinances?
Ordinances tabled to remaining committee, 2025-247, 2025-281.
All right, very good. Seeing no movement. Now for ordinances for committees' consideration. Mr. Clerk, could you read? Please read the ordinances for CWLP.
Ordinances for committee consideration, CWLP, 2025-389, an ordinance authorizing renewal of Cisco Smart Net Support Maintenance for the core infrastructure equipment from Persidio Networked Solutions LLC from state contract, and the amount not to exceed $59,250.80 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second. Any discussion? Motion for, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Many of them. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
2025-390 is an ordinance approving professional services agreement with BHMG Engineers, Inc., and the amount not to exceed $455,500 for engineering services in related to the Sangamo Solar Farm MISO Project J1610, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation of the MISO J1610 deposits for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Thank you.
2025-391, an ordinance approving professional services agreement with BM, BHMG, I'm sorry, BHMG Engineers, Inc., and the amount not to exceed $498,930 for engineering services for the design of Interstate Lanesville 138 KV Transmission Rebuild for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-392 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois, and the Board of Trustees, the University of Illinois, on behalf of the University of Illinois Springfield, UIS, for the installation, operation, and maintenance of two public dual port level charging stations in the parking lot one north of the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
Public Works. 2025-393, an ordinance annexing certain described property located at 1150 Old Toronto Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Do we need a public hearing on that?
Not for this one, no.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-394, an ordinance authorizing execution of agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois, and Jason Campbell and Lindsay Campbell for the property located at 1150 Old Toronto Road for the Office of Public Works.
For debate.
Second.
Move to debate. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Move, it's on debate.
2025-395, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at 5953 Iron Bridge Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-396, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois, and Sherry S. Lynch and Robert D. Lynch for the property located at 5953 Iron Bridge Road for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for debate.
We have a motion for debate. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion to debate.
2025-397, an ordinance authorizing supplemental number two for the preliminary and design phase engineering services, PE1 and PE2, for the Martin Luther King Drive Safety Improvements Project, MFT Sections Number 22-00495-00SP, with Quig Engineering for the additional amount not to exceed $67,290 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent. Second.
Seeing no discussion, and we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-398 is an ordinance accepting low bid and authorizing the execution of a contract number PW26-23 with Paul Tree Farms LLC to furnish 200 trees plantings in the amount of $79,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. We have a motion and a second.
We got discussion.
And we do have discussion. Alderman Domlin.
I just have a question. What ward would those trees be going in?
I just have a question. What ward would those trees be going in?
Director Fuchs?
Did you hear the question?
Thank you.
No, I didn't. I'm sorry.
My question was, what ward did the 200 trees go in?
Primarily, that will be in the northeast quadrant of the city.
I kicked the can down there.
What ward is that?
That primarily Ward 4, sir.
So he doesn't get, he doesn't get charging stations, but he gets trees?
They charge, well, they charge a car.
You park your car under the tree. We're going green.
Thank you, thank you, Director.
Are those gumball trees, by the way? So anyway, we, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Alderman Gregory, sorry about that.
I'm going to clarify, Director, we're not planting no apple trees and plum trees and all that. That's going to clog up our system.
Gumball trees, please.
Gumball trees.
Not this tall, Dave.
Redland trees. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? I think we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Those against? Motion passes.
2025-399, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $67,290 may be used for the preliminary design and engineering services for the Martin Luther King Drive Safety Improvements Project, MFT, section is 22-00495-00SP, for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion with, I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye. Against, say no. Motion passes.
2025-400, a supplemental resolution for the improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, MFT, section number 02-0043100PV, Archer Elevator to Walbash and Old Jacksonville Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
Uh, yeah, I need discussion. Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, Dave, could you tell me what, what area of that road is going to be improved? Because to my understanding, the only part was the, was the townships.
Sir, this is actually a cleanup ordinance from a project that was conducted from 2016 to 2018. There was, this is a notification that we use some additional motor fuel tax to pay for that. It was design money. But this is a, this is a cleanup ordinance.
Okay, for the, for the part that's already from, really, it's from Isles to, to Walbash, technically. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Director Fuchs. Do we have a motion and a second? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
General City Business, 2025-401, an ordinance decrease the number of Class AA liquor licenses by one due to the closure of business by Astria Wine Bar and Market LLC, DBA Astor Wine Bar and Market located at 308 East Adams.
Move consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-402, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class A, double A liquor licenses by one due to the closure of the business of Central Point, Inc., DBA, the gin mill located at 235 South Fifth Street.
Move consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
2025-403, an ordinance authorizing decrease of number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to the closure of JCJ Beverages 3, Inc., DBA Tackology 101 located at 219 South Fifth Street.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-404, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Los Rancho's Taco Truck LLC, DBA Los Altos Casino Cantina located at 3266 West Isles.
Move consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye. Against? Motion passes.
2025-405 is an ordinance authorizing the increase in the number of Class L liquor licenses by one for Legacy Hospitality Group LLC, DBA Fairfield Inn located at 3951 South MacArthur Boulevard.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-406, an ordinance authorizing payment to William Willsley, a current city of Springfield police officer, for settlement of workers' compensation claim number 24-WC-034785 in the amount not to exceed $52,923.55.
Move consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. And we have a motion and a second. Those, those all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-407 is an ordinance authorizing payment to Seth Kovak, a current city of Springfield police officer, for settlement of workers' compensation claim 24-WC-011075 in the amount not to exceed $74,178.44.
Move consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Say aye. And motion passes. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Alderman Donlin? Yes, I'd like to make a motion for an omnibus vote on item number 2025-408 through 414.
Some hope.
Can we, can I ask you to actually put 408 on debate and make that omnibus vote 409?
Second.
408, we need, we'll need to amend.
Yes.
The exhibit.
My motion is to make an ominous vote, to make 408 a debate and the others 408 through, excuse me, 409 through 414 on the consent.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-408, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a proposal under RFP-CS19-29, an execution of an agreement with Maryland &amp; Young for the purchase of city-owned property consisting of five parcels in the amount of $2,500 for the Office of Budget Management. 2025-409, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a proposal under RFP-CS19-29, an execution of an agreement with Eddie Ray for the purchase of city-owned property consisting of one vacant lot located at 1518 East Melrose in the amount of $500 for the Office of Budget Management. 2025-410, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a proposal under RFP-CS19-29, an execution of an agreement with Dontray Holder for the purchase of city-owned property consisting of four parcels in the amount of $2,000 for the Office of Budget Management. 2025-411, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a proposal under RFP-CS19-29, an execution of an agreement with George Sinclair for the purchase of city-owned property consisting of one vacant lot located at 1113 South Grand Avenue in the amount of $500 for the Office of Budget Management. 2025-412 is an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a proposal under RFP-CS19-29, an execution of an agreement with James Irwin for the purchase of city-owned property consisting of one vacant lot at 2116 East Monroe for the amount of $500 for the Office of Budget Management. 2025-413 is an ordinance authorizing acceptance of proposal under RFP-CS19-29, an execution of agreement with Romel Hill for the purchase of city-owned property consisting of seven parcels in the amount of $3,500 for the Office of Budget Management. 2025-414 is an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a proposal under RFP-CS19-29, an execution of an agreement with Ralph Field Lathan for the purchase of city-owned property consisting of three parcels in the amount of $1,500 for the Office of Budget Management.
Again, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for 2025-408 to be on the debate and the rest of the items read by the clerk to be on the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have any, that was old, thanks, Mr. Clerk, that was old. So, those in favor, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-415, a resolution estimating real property taxes to be levied to partial fund to the statutory contribution of the police and fire pension funds.
Move consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion with a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye. Those against? Motion passes.
2025-416, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of an execution of grant number B25-MC-17-0023, FY25 CDBG Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and the Home Investment Properties Partnerships Program Grant Number M25-MC-17-0209 for the amount not to exceed $1,779,663.29 for the Department of Housing and Urban Development, covering the FY25 program year activities starting on September 18th, 2025, for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. A motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
2025-417, an ordinance authorizing subreciprocal agreement with VISIONs 1908 and payment in the amount of $199,770 for the reimbursement work pursuant to the ICJIA grant number 422045 to fund the Second Chance Program for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Consent, right? He said consent, right?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. Sorry, I heard debate.
Is that it, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Next is unfinished.
No.
18, 19.
One more.
21, 21.
Could you please read the ordinances for Public Works?
I'm sorry.
No, we'll keep going on general business.
Eleven.
It didn't turn page. Bad copy.
2025-418, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority ICJIA grant number 422045 in the amount of $199,770 to fund the VISIONs 1908 Second Chance Program and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $199,770 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion with a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-419, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of $150,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-420, an ordinance authorizing subrecip, subrecipient agreement with Envision Unlimited NFP and payment to the amount of $300,000 for the air conditioning and many split replacements for the Hope Springs apartment located at 1135 North Ninth Street using CDBG money, Community Development Block Grant Funds pursuant to the agreement number 25-SR0102 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2025-421, is an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation for capital equipment bond fund in the amount of 403,469.05 for the purchase of 10 police interceptors and one F-150 police responder from Marl Brothers Ford, Inc., for the Springfield Police Department.
For consent.
Second.
Seeing no discussion. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-422, an ordinance directing the sale and authorizing the acceptance of a proposal under RFP-CS26-25, an execution of an agreement with, that's blank, Mr.
Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, I think, I think we are motion to hold.
Yeah, motion to hold, committee, please.
We have a second on that?
Okay.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion, 422 is held. Okay. That's it, okay. Next is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the committee? Alderman Gregory?
Yes, thank you. Corporate counsel, I asked you to look into our tiny home situation over here on Stanford and what, what do you think?
Yeah, so I, I looked at our, or I've pulled the, the hearing from, from when the zoning was granted. And today I received the report of what, what permits have been pulled. So I'm preparing to, to send you a response on the zoning issue, so you can take a look at it.
Okay. So going, moving forward, Mr. Murdock, this, this issue is about these, these tiny homes out there. I'm, I'm nor here or there on them, but I do expect our community to be told the truth when they come. Any, anybody who comes up here for zoning and say they have 300 petitions and they don't, is not being truthful in front of this council. You know, and, and I take those things very, very serious. I, you know, when, when I talk to people, I expect them to tell me the truth. I'm always telling them the truth. So it bothers me that, that these, and I had another call about, you know, some more tiny homes. Alderman Williams got calls about tiny homes. We have another situation that, 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 you know, we've been caught on in, in Alderman Williams' purchase ward on this side of the track. So, you know, it's starting to feel again like we're just loading up, and not us as this council, but those who are in this industry are loading this all up on the east side. And we can't, we can't grow on the east side with everything that nobody else wants on our side of town. So, you know, I'm looking forward to that, that information, but I also would like to work with you for my ward and anybody else who would like. But I would like to put a moratorium on the tiny homes in my ward. I did look it up. I looked up our legalities for it, and anybody else. We need to take a look at how we're going to have these. They're probably coming in the future and it'd be a big thing. But we need to look at this. And we need to look at not only the zoning and where we're going to place these things, but being fair about it. You know, the newest situation to help people move along in their lives, you know, me and Alderman Williams, we taking a beating from businesses. We know the intent. We want to be good. But we're taking a bit, a beating from businesses. And I'll leave it at that. So I do want to look into that. You know, I looked up our legalities and we can do that. So that's something I'd like to discuss with you and, and go over. And I'll be ready to push an ordinance for that. For Ward 2, anybody else who, who's interested is welcome to join in on that. But for Ward 2, we're not going to continue to be loaded up on with these, with these types of things. I'm all about affordable housing. I'm all about new housing and things of that nature. But we can't take all the brunt of, of things and, and situations that, that no one else wants. So moving along, I had a few things on that. I've had some conversations on, on our, and this is light work, but on our, this is a new website. We changed from the old one to the new one. On, on that, under economic development, I did find in Ms. Amy, there, there's two sections. So it lists all of our tiffs, when we create them, when they end. But in fact, I, I don't see anything new for the new SHA Pillsbury Tiff area, as well as a map. Now, yes, there is an interactive section that does show each one of those tiffs and where they're at. But there should also be accurate information as far as that tiff exists with, with a physical paper map as well that people can just print out and look at it. It's hard, it's hard to pitch a program if I don't have the materials needed to, to, to go out into the community. And that's no, no blame on Ms. Amy. I know she's been working at it. But whoever controls our, our website, we need to make sure all that information is accurate, especially in the services part that we're pushing out to our, to our community members. So, thank you. That is all I have for tonight. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Alderman Notarano.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to recognize that yesterday it was proclaimed by our mayor that it was Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Springfield. So I would like to commend the citizens who worked so hard to bring that proclamation to fruition and of course, thank our mayor for proclaiming it such. And as further recognition, I would like to let everyone know that Illinois State Museum on the Capitol Complex has several exhibits related to Indigenous Peoples' history in our area. And these exhibits are available to view now, and they include things such as hide painting, photography, and beaded textiles, some of which haven't been displayed in many years. So please take the following month to stop by the State Museum and check out Indigenous history in our area. Thank you. Oh, and sorry, one other thing, less, less pleasant. Director Fuchs, do you have an update for me on 1622 South MacArthur?
The latest that I have on 1622 South MacArthur comes from a conversation I had with Mitch Flynn, our building official, just the other day. The owners of that property have reached out to John Schaefer, John Schaefer's architectural firm, and they have entered into agreement to have him produce a plan for the renovation and upgrade of the building. And we are waiting to receive those plans.
Okay. So I know that we have been waiting to receive those plans since, I believe, the deadline was given in September. So no, no movement on that at all. It just, we now have proof that they have hired. Okay, so I know that we have been waiting to receive those plans since, uh, I believe the deadline was given in September. Um, so, no, no movement on that at all. It just, we now have proof that they have hired an architect?
Yes, and they, we have been told that they are working on the development plans. So until we receive it, uh, we won't be able to evaluate. We can't consult with them on.
Okay.
Creating a plan.
So, at this point, um, it's, it's not been worked on since March, the, the building. Um, can we really consider this a construction site, or is this not a blighted, abandoned building?
There has been work done to secure the building, first floor.
Sure, but it's, it's not currently in construction, and I know if my neighbor's house looked the way this house or this building, um, across from Baskin-Robbins on MacArthur looked, um, they would not be allowed to have their house in that condition and not have any consequences from the city of Springfield.
The building is secured according to our ordinances. You cannot access the building from the first floor. Uh, I do note that the second floor is open, but that is not a violation. Uh, our communication with them is such that they intend to renovate the building. They have, uh, retained an architect and are proceeding forward. So, until we receive the plan, uh, we can't, we can't go any further.
Okay, this may be a question for Corporation Council. So what, uh, what does it take to get a property on the vacant and abandoned list?
So, from, from my office, they need to be written up as a, as a vacant and abandoned property, um, after an inspection, and then we, we file the complaint, uh, we take it to administrative court, and, and we prove that it's a vacant and abandoned structure. Uh, I think with regard to this particular case, uh, Public Works has been working with the owner, so we haven't received a complaint to, to file yet. Um, and so, we don't have an ongoing court case to have it declared, uh, vacant and abandoned at this point, um, because they have been working with us to, uh, um, to secure the bottom and to improve the property.
But can you really say that they've been working with us when it's been months and they haven't presented the plans that were promised to us in September? I mean, that doesn't sound like cooperation or, or meeting any minimum requirements to me.
I mean, I'm, I'm not an engineer and I don't work in construction, so I know that they're, that they're talking with the architects, and if they think it's commercially reasonable and not turning it over to legal, then we have nothing to prosecute. And, and we are being told in legal that they're working with our Public Works Department to get it done.
So, i- if you would, uh, ask Mitch to respond to my email and, um, let me know what evidence our department, Public Works Department, has, um, that they are truly moving forward with this project, um, because honestly, short of seeing, um, the schedule for the architects and engineers to come out and evaluate the property, I just don't buy it. Um, this is completely unacceptable. I know that it is not your fault, um, and I am not trying to direct any of my frustration towards you, but this building has been a thorn in the side of MacArthur Boulevard for o- over, over a year, certainly, um, but has been in disrepair for decades. Um, so it's, it's really, I, I don't know what more, um, what more I could possibly do to encourage these people to come forward and be better stewards of their property. Um, it's not fair to the folks who live around there. Um, and frankly, it's not fair to our city, because like I said, if somebody owned a two-story house and the whole front was off of it, I'm talking from rafter to floorboards, not just the windows were open, but the entire front was off of that house, I know that would not be acceptable. Thank you.
I'll make sure that, uh, Mr. Flynn communicates with you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Uh, Alderman Williams.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you, Director Fuchs, for coming. I want to thank you for all my projects. I mean, they're moving. Aloft took forever, but it's, it's, it, you know, everything's going great as far as that, but I got some concerns on, on a few of them, and I'm gonna start with my buildings, following up with, uh, the Alderwoman. So at twenty-two-thirty-two East Cook, uh, sits at the light of twenty-third and Cook, right next to Fifth Street Renaissance. I've told you this, and I've told, oh, she's not here, the other lawyer, and I'll talk to you, Corporate Counsel, 'cause this is, again, empty buildings that are eyesores. It used to be an ice cream shop or something. I, I can't even remember, or a candy shop maybe, but it's overgrown, it's bad. I get walkers from a home to look good. They do good with their property. Even Fifth Street Renaissance, which is on the other side of it, looks good. Across the street is, uh, County's Community Health or something right there. But I've got two bad buildings right in that area. The ice cream shop I'm talking about is one. Uh, Katia, it should at least be in court, 'cause it needs to come down. So by now, I'm hoping that it's in court, because we have sent inspectors out there and all of that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pull the status of that case in a way, you know?
Please, because, uh, it's just like the red brick building on, on, on South Grand and Wheeler. I'm not gonna let it go until it's down. Now, now, the red brick building's down, but the foundation is still undone and uneven and all that. I want it flat like a park, or like we would make any other citizen do when they tear something down. They just can't tear it down and leave a partial foundation out there and just sitting there. So I would like to make sure that whether it's Corporate Counsel that has to take care of this, that the owner, or it's either we do it and then charge the owner. Tear down that ice cream shop. And my final building is one that, I mean, when I came in twenty-twenty-one, this building was a problem and it's still a problem, and it's an old school building behind Central County's, um, health. I think it was with Rome Athenee. Somebody help me. It was one, one of those grade schools directly across from Washington Middle School. That building, uh, I know it's a sick building. They've explained to me about the lead and the asbestos and all this other stuff that's in it, but that doesn't excuse it to exist for years, just sitting there. It needs to come down. Needs to be tore down. Uh, I'm putting this on record again, starting the clock again, and I'm begging that we do something. The school district doesn't own it. A private person owns it, and we don't, we shouldn't allow these things. This is why we can't get development on the east side, because we let things stay old and closed up and sit there for years. And then we wonder, why won't nobody come over here and build something other than houses? I'll say we get houses, but we can't get even small businesses, because of the, these, these type of things that we're allowed to go on. So if you'll think, uh, give me an update and a follow-up on those three properties, Director, I, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Alderman Gregory.
He, he spurred my moment here, here, my brain. Um, Corporation Council, now we own this building, you, the old UCP buildings, and w- we own them. We've owned them for some time since UCP left over there on Sixteenth and, ah, Jeffersonish, Washington, Sixteenth and Washington, and we've owned those buildings for some time. And again, you know, the only offer that we, we've had two offers. It was supposed to be a, a, um, youth center, you know, I have all those records still. Um, we sold that building for a dollar to UCP, that particular building, the one closest to the bridge. Um, you know, I, and, 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 you know, I know that group is still interested in doing something with that. It's definitely gonna take about a million dollars to even get it, get it up and running. But if we have no plans because what's been offered, uh, uh, another group home and all that stuff, I, 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 I won't approve it. Um, we already been slicked like that once, so, um, they met with the community. We've met with the community with that building. We're, you know, that's not what they want in, in that particular community. Um, at one point in time, it was for, used for youth, and I think that, that, that would be suffice, but if we're not gonna do that, then we, it's our building, and we need to tear it down. It's, it's time, it's time to move on. Um, we just recently, you know, proclaimed that bridge, Miss Sonia Massey Bridge, and, and it's time to clean it up. That, that building needs to go. I wish we could do something to it. I wish the plans for the empowerment zone still went through, um, but that was tore down. So, um, that building needs to go with it, and so we can continue to grow. It's the same thing. Uh, you know, the only thing that people wanna put over here is things that no other community, you know, really wants, and, and without forcefully. Um, and, and, and our community has taken too much of that, and, uh, so that building there, if you can give me the status update on where we're at. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Uh, next is new business. Is there any new business to come before the committee? Alderman Williams, that's old.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, Alderman Donlin.
Yes, uh, Mr. Clerk, I just wanted to point out that our committee in November, first committee is scheduled for November eleventh, which is Veterans Day, which the city's office has closed. I wanted to see if we could consider moving that to the Wednesday, the twelfth. How does everybody feel about that?
That's up to the clerk.
November twelfth, yeah. Do we need to take, do we need to take a vote on that, Mr.? Okay.
I made the motion, we move it to the twelfth.
We have a second? Those, any, any discussion? Those in favor of moving November to, meeting to November twelfth, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes, November twelfth, Wednesday.
And then secondly, Mr. Chair, I would like to point out that one of us is going to be experiencing a important day tomorrow, a birthday, and I'd like you all to wish Mayor Busher a happy birthday.
Mr. Donlin? That's it. That's it. Uh, Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you. Um, you know, after the recent tragedy that happened in Chatham, it reminded me of every act of giving, and I had recently, um, partnered with Impact of Life to give. Can you hear me?
Mm-mm.
Sorry. She was saying she couldn't hear me. I was saying after the recent tragedy in Chatham, it reminded me of how every act of giving matters. So I had started donating blood to help ensure that we're ready to save lives if another tragedy, uh, was to happen, and I am partnering this Saturday with Impact of Life and Secretary of State. Um, and we have a certain amount of slots open, and Chair, if you don't mind, we have someone from Impact of Life that's here that would like to give the details so that everyone would know what's going on, and I would encourage all of you to come and join. Um, and you can either get your driver's license, renewal stickers, or you can be a part of the impact of donating blood. When that situation took place in Chatham, we had ran out of blood. We didn't have enough, uh, blood to provide for the, the lost lives that we had if we could've saved them. So I asked myself, how could I be, um, of influence to help get more people to donate, donate, and this is a way of doing it, this upcoming Saturday, and I would like to provide her with one to two minutes just to give you all details.
Certainly.
Teresa, thank you, Chair.
Teresa.
Hi, everyone.
Oh.
Um, let me. Okay, um, good evening. My name is Teresa Tran. I am co-chair of Impact Life of the Springfield Associate Board. Um, this Saturday, like Alderwoman Purchase said, uh, Saturday eighteenth, from ten a.m. to two p.m., we are hosting a mobile blood drive in partnership with, um, Alderwoman and Secretary of State DMV Mobile Services. We are grateful for our Savior's Lutheran Church on Old Jacksonville Road to provide, um, a space for us to be. So, like she said, when tragedy strikes, whether from violence, disease, or accident, people need blood. Mothers who hemorrhage, um, from delivery, children undergoing chemotherapy, victims of violence fighting for another chance of life, they all need blood. That's why I coordinate blood drives across central Illinois. Um, after the Why Not daycare, uh, tragedy, our communities showed up. The scheduling portals completely full. Um, that's the power of community when compassion meets action. This weekend, we are making it easier for you guys to give back. Pairing a blood drive with DMV Mobile Services means you can donate blood, renew your license, or complete your state ID, all in one stop. It's civic duty made accessible. In light of the recent heartbreaking losses here in Springfield, I want to take a moment to honor the lives we've lost and the families left behind. I ask that we keep the same energy, same love, urgency, and unity, because when our neighbors are hurting, Springfield shows up, and that's who we are. As a small token of appreciation, successful donors will receive a twenty-dollar E gift card, or you can choose to donate that gift to a nonprofit of your choice, so your impact keeps giving. For any reason we reach full capacity and all slots fill up, uh, please consider donating at Impact Life's Wabash Avenue location in the coming weeks. Every pint counts. And if you are a part of a business or organization that would like to host a blood drive, please reach out to me directly. I'd love to work with you and bring this mission to your space and community. You guys can find the signup, uh, links and QR codes on Alderwoman's Facebook pages, Impact Life's Facebook pages, um, my personal Facebook page, Teresa Tran, um, and thank you guys for all your time and all the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Now it's time for citizens' requests to address the committee. Mr. Clerk, are there any citizens who wish to address the committee?
Yes, sir. Aaron Cahill.
It's cold in there, bro.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, Purchase.
Are we good to go, Mr. Cahill?
Is that?
Are we good to go?
Yep.
Okay.
Hey, guys. I'm just up here to talk to y'all once again about immigration's customs enforcement, but before we do that, I'd like to take a moment, uh, of silence for Ms. Major Griffin Gracie, trans woman who was a, uh, very well-known, uh, advocate for the trans community, as well as, um, Mr. George Floyd, who would have been fifty-two today. Thank you. So, uh, God, I can't see that. Like I said, I'm here once again, trying to get some support for our community regarding immigration's customs enforcement. They have become increasingly violent, increasingly violent. They are ramming cars. They're kicking doors, all happening in Chicago right now. Um, they have shot people with their pistol, shot people dead. Well, she didn't die luckily, but they're shooting at people. They're shooting tear gas at activists and protesters. They tear gassed, as I said last week, they tear gassed, uh, Chicago Police Department. They are increasingly violent. So few of them are wearing credentials. So few of them are wearing legitimate or legal credentials, i.e. badges with a nu- badge number on it, any kind of photo ID. They are covering their faces. These are allegedly law enforcement officers, allegedly, and I don't know about anybody else, but I will follow Illinois state law. If I see some random person grabbing my neighbor and shoving them into a car, I am drawing. I am ending a threat. That is legal in this state, and I will do it. What I want is some people that will stand up and say, this is crap. There's no reason we should have this. Folks are acting like this ain't coming our way, but I hate to tell you, we're between Chicago and their next stop, which is probably gonna be St. Louis. We're in a bad spot right now. We have law enforcement acting lawless. And quite honestly, I don't feel that, you know, the city or the law, or the police department here has put enough emphasis on the fact that y'all supposedly support your constituents here. If you support them, tell them you support them. We can get a statement about somebody getting fired for some Charlie Kirk nonsense, but we can't get a statement saying, hey, we get you. We understand that you're scared right now. We will help you in some way, shape, or form, you know? But we can't get that. Why can't we get that? We don't give a toot about the brown folk? Is that what it is? No, they're not like us. It's fine. Is that kind of the going thought process here? Because it's not. It's not acceptable at all. Somebody needs to step up, Mayor, and tell folks that you're here for them. And I'd like to welcome the Purple Coalition into the arena. They are here for accountability purposes. Somebody is finally holding somebody accountable. Show ain't the city, but thankfully, we got the Purple Coalition now.
Y'all have a good one.
James Johnson.
God is still in control.
Yes, sir.
God is in control. We wrestle not against flesh and bu- blood, but against rulers, principalities, rulers in high places. Now, I've been a part of a union, organizations, groups, and Brad, y'all know Brad, he always had a saying, if you ain't in the fight with us, you're against us. And I'm a part of that branch of that tree, and I just want to make sure everybody knows, like, when I come up here, and to Alderman Purchase, with all due respect, you know, I still respect you guys no matter what. I don't come up here to make friends. I don't come up here to tell jokes. I come up here to suggest, teach, make opinions, give opinions, warnings, whatever it is. Right now, we in some trying times, and we have to fight. If you know your history, this is a time that you're going to get in a fight. And I don't make threats, and anybody that took it that way, you don't know me. You didn't hear me. But I'm here to stand up because there's a regime that's attacking our democracy and want to go back to the Jim Crow days, and I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I'm gonna fight for my social security and my health care. I live in a blue state that's being attacked. I'm calling all strong people to stand up. We all got to come together, and I don't really care what color you are. You either in the fight with us, or you against us, and your silence tells me you against us. And as long as you against us, then okay, that's fine. But I'm about to be, I'm not to be, I'm not going to be apologetic about nothing I say up here, because freedom of speech, I will fight for, because there's people trying to take it. And for the new Purple Coalition, so everybody know, I'm gonna stand with them. For the real men wear pink, I'm gonna stand with them. And for the good police officers that ain't retired so far, I'm gonna stand with them, but we all know that there's some bad ones. The late Congressman John Lewis said, we're gonna have to get into some good trouble. And I don't know if y'all paying attention to what's going on around the country, and if you pay attention to the market. See, Alderman Gregory, the market don't lie. You see what gold and silver is done? It don't lie. We going into some dark days before it gets lighter, but God's still in control. I'm done.
Yes, sir.
Robert Williams. Robert Williams.
Where am I here?
Rihanna Day.
Okay, so I want to address the whole no electric chargers being placed on the north side of town, considering they are putting a new Amazon facility there and the fact that we've got that Walmart right there. If you look at socioeconomics, they, that runs our city down to the ground over there, that just, that increases poverty to the population over there. So, in my, I'm just saying, I see, I see why they're putting them, where they're putting them, but we need to invest in your ward so that way we can make it so it's worth having chargers over there. And then Sean had said that we need to be focusing on truth. We just got the Purple Coalition, and with that being said, truth is, truth is our way to community healing. That's how we heal each other. That's how we, that's how we move forward. So with that being said, I need to address some healing of my own that I put out into the community before I emotionally processed it myself. Earlier this year, I shared a story about how my family had lost a business due to retaliation from smaller business. My family owned a disposal business that was located outside of Springfield in Sangamon County. Growing up in the 90s, I would hear stories about how a smaller disposal company that was named Waste Management tried to buy out my family's company, but my uncle refused as he had, as he chose the potential of generational wealth over a quick buck. Since he chose to invest in the future of his family instead of instant monetary gain, this sparked a flurry of retaliation tactics, and at the end of everything, my family was unable to retain the business. Waste Management became an essential waste provider for our city in this area afterwards. It turns out that during this time, Waste Management was exaggerating its earnings in a successful attempt to inflate executive bonuses and investor stocks. This caused a 1.7 billion, with a B, billion-dollar scandal that resulted in investors losing more than $6 billion in market shares. The company was ordered to pay $4 million in fees for deceitful financial practices, and then went back to picking up your trash, maybe, or not. I don't know. I hear they pick and choose. Anyways, when following the money, it led to the accounting firm Arthur Andersen, which inevitably led to the human trafficking that's in Sangamon County. Arthur Andersen was one of the big five, one of the biggest accounting firms in the world until the scandal was revealed in 2001. This scandal resulted in the largest bankruptcy reorganization in U.S. history, and while the energy company Enron, appliance company Sunbeam, and communications company WorldCom were all pushed out of business, Waste Management continues to operate in all 50 states as the largest waste provider today. I understand why so many in our city are scared to speak up, but we are stronger together, and we will not go silently. Silence is compliance, and at this point in history, silence is violence. With that said, researching this topic stirred up some of my own personal trauma that I then shared, but I need to correct the record. At the beginning of this year, I shared a personal Me Too statement. As a child and into my teenage years, I was competitive dancer that would travel to different states to perform. Because of the state things had happened in, paired with the distant family being included in Epstein's black book, I had equated the experience to Epstein. However, unless Epstein was at a dance expo in Orlando, Florida in 2002, I highly doubt he was involved. And while I was initially accusatory towards my family for taking me to the expo, I want to clarify that my family is also not to blame. My mom did her absolute best to give me a privileged childhood, while rape culture and white supremacy did their best to steal any childhood innocence I may have been able to experience. Thank you, and as always, fudge Donald Trump, because I can't say the other word.
Mayor Bill Cruz, Hine. Mayor Bill Cruz, Hine. Ken Pasha.
Evening, everybody. The Sonia Massey trial starts next week on Wednesday. Jury selection is Monday and Tuesday. I think that highlights an important note that a lot of people like to overlook. Even within our own city government, the Sonia Massey murder has been almost pushed off under the idea that it didn't actually happen in Springfield, that it was a county area, that it wasn't necessarily a Springfield concern. I'm not sure if you guys know this, but people outside Springfield don't know what a county doughnut hole is. They don't care either. They know that the city of Springfield had a law enforcement officer murder one of its own citizens on camera, and they know that the ensuing Massey Commission is issuing a plethora of recommendations for the local area. I will strongly urge you Alderman persons to attend their listening sessions. They have two left before they finalize their findings, and then I will strongly encourage all of you to read them, and then read them again, and then read them again, and read them again, and keep reading them until you start to see the importance of why those suggestions matter so much to this city. For far too long, our leadership has kicked things down the road, pushed it on to the next administration, or written it off that it's not their concern. Quite frankly, after reading the mayoral transition report, I'm well aware that the Busher administration was well informed of the issues that were existing within this city. The lack of continuation of a lot of the work and groundwork that had been laid should move beyond party affiliation or ego. This city is far behind other capital cities in terms of development, outcomes, crime, relationships with the community, law enforcement reform, and the list goes on. The idea that something happened within this city and a border that is imaginary beyond tax income somehow divides this city from those outcomes is a wild idea and a bit diabolical when you consider why the city won't eat up a place like the Cabbage Patch. It's a lack of willingness to invest in the infrastructure, isn't it? It's the idea that we don't want to spend that money on it, so we're willing to take those kind of places within our city that lead to these kind of outcomes. And I think it's interesting that, quite frankly, after all the meetings I've attended, there's only a few faces that are present here that I've seen at those meetings on any sort of basis, and I think it's interesting when we talk about that kind of thing, because what we're really talking about is accountability from our leadership. It shouldn't matter the letter that's behind your name, and it really shouldn't matter how you feel about me. I'm a part of this community, and I do get talked to a lot by community members that don't want to talk to some of you, that don't feel comfortable talking to people in authority, that definitely don't feel comfortable coming here after 50 cops show up, especially when their issues may lie with SPD. And I think that's really why the Purple Coalition launched today. We are strongly committed to the idea of working with everyone, as long as you're willing to work with us. We believe in the idea that trust is needing to be present for accountability, because without accountability, you can't have change. But I'll be honest with you, I think a lot of the reason people avoid those things is discomfort. It's not my problem. I don't want to confront it. Why is this being brought to me? That should give you pause, because people are coming to you with those concerns, and if you don't understand why, that's your problem, not theirs. They're not in the wrong place. They're asking you to listen to what they have to say and really consider what that means to them on a day-to-day basis. People live and die outside of this building, and a lot of us, a lot of you, live in neighborhoods that you won't ever feel that. Those shootings and the retaliatory ones happened blocks from my house, and they've done that for years, just like it has for decades. And I ask you to really consider that idea that decades of my life have been spent in that neighborhood, and that the same outcomes continue, because quite frankly, overpolicing isn't working. A five-to-one black disparity amongst traffic stops when those killings continue and the gun crimes pile up, that proves that's not working. It isn't their job to somehow figure out, to find out why the socioeconomic, the institutional, and systemic racism that is continual throughout the thread of history that is Springfield's existence, that's not just up to you guys or the community, it's up to all of us, and it's long past time that we took that responsibility. The length of black life is treated with short worth, but the length of my life is also treated with short worth on that side of town, of a 20-year shorter life expectancy than you guys do, just by virtue of ZIPCo. And let's just tell you something about the progress that's been made in this city and the extreme amount of work that still needs to be done. The commission ending only means that your work will begin, and we, as a coalition, are happy to work with you, but that takes you willing to work with.
Thanks, Ken.
Chair's standage.
Good evening, council members. I was going to start off with a moment of silence for George Floyd, but since we've already held space for him, I would like to instead start off with a moment of silence for the three black youth that we lost in our community a few days ago, the youngest victim being nine years old. Today would have been George Floyd's 52nd birthday if he wasn't brutally murdered by the police on May 25th, 2020, outside of a grocery store in Minneapolis. Oftentimes, I am asked, what radicalized you? As a single mother of four beautiful black children, I would have to say the answer to that question is listening to Mr. Floyd, a grown man of great stature, cry and plead out for his mother, while Officer Derek Chauvin knelt on Mr. Floyd's neck for over nine minutes while he was pinned face down on the street. After a second independent autopsy, the independent examiners found that pressure applied by the officer's knee on Floyd's back and neck impeded blood flow to the brain and his ability to breathe. On July 6th of last year, right here in our own city of Springfield, Illinois, Sangamon County Deputy Sean Grayson shot Sonia Massey in her face in the kitchen of her own home. She had called 911 for assistance. After asking Ms. Massey to go from her living room to her kitchen to turn off a boiling pot of water, he killed her, leaving her two children without a mother and leaving her very large and loving family distraught. Sean Grayson's trial will begin next Monday, October 20th, at 9:00 a.m. Peoriaans for Justice for Sonia have organized a rally that day starting at 9:00 a.m. outside of the Peoria County Courthouse. Please join us in solidarity of the Massey family as we enter the next round in the fight for justice for Sonia Massey. I stand here today as the president of a freshly-launched Purple Coalition. We are a coalition of community activists and advocates who have invested in each other and our community. Purple is an acronym. It stands for People United for Reform, Power, Liberation, and Equity. Our mission involves bringing our community together as a whole, having hard conversations, and asking tough questions to identify where the gaps in service are and addressing those who can help fill them. This also includes holding those accountable who inflict harm on our community. We cannot come together and grow as a community if we cannot acknowledge the root causes of why our predominantly black neighborhoods' residents have a life expectancy of 20 years less than the people who live 20 minutes away. We are powerful when we come together, and together we can change systems. In the words of the late Asada Shakur, "If I know anything at all, it's that a wall is just a wall and nothing more at all. It can be broken down." Today, we are starting to break down those walls. From here forward, we move as one. On behalf of the Purple Coalition, we would like to invite this council in its entirety to our community town hall at the Old State Capitol Building on November 17th at 6:30 p.m. This will be a crucial step towards accountability, transparency, and collaboration. We urge everyone here today and watching at home to join us and to use this town hall as an opportunity for your voices to be heard. From the biggest organizations to our unhoused neighbors, we want to hear the voices of our community as a whole. These first steps are how we begin, bringing our community together, not through fear or division, but through understanding and unity. We can't change systems in a couple of hours. We need to come together and keep having these conversations and keep them consistent to create real change. We will keep listening, keep organizing, and keep pushing until justice, transparency, and compassion are the standard, not the exception. Thank you.
Eric Shanklin.
Good evening, everyone.
Mary, could you pull the microphone down, please?
Yes. I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself to the Springfield City Council. My name is Mary Shanklin, and I've been a proud resident of Springfield for most of my life. I currently live in the Pioneer Park Home Association area on the east side of Springfield in Ward 2. Tonight, I come before you to speak about an issue that is devastating to our community, gun violence. On Thursday, October 9th, 2025, our city experienced a heartbreaking tragedy, a triple homicide that claimed the lives of three individuals. This is close to me. They are, is my best friend for 60 years. Manisha Day, 22 years old. Davion Bradley, 21 years old. And Cash Russell, just nine years old, a fourth-grade student at Graham Elementary School. These three lives were taken as if it didn't matter, but they did. They mattered deeply to their families, to their friends, and to the community. We cannot ignore this. We must feel the loss as a community and respond with urgency and unity. The individuals suspected of committing this horrific act are believed to be under the age of 30. This fact alone should be a wake-up call. I'm calling on Mayor Busher, Police Chief Bill, civil leaders, elected officials, let's come together, united, to address this crisis. This cannot continue. Gun violence is not just a problem for one group, it affects us all. Black lives does matter, and yes, all lives matter. But it is not just one person or one department's responsibilities to fix this, it's all of us. I'm here to encourage the change, not tomorrow, but now. Even small steps can lead to larger vision, but they must be real, actionable, steps that has a lasting impact. We owe it to ourselves and to our children to create a community where lives past nine, 21, and 22 is not just a rare hope, but an expectation. I still find myself asking, how did we get here? Where did this become, or when did this become, our reality? Why did we allow it? Was it when we let drugs flood our neighborhoods? When we turn a blind eye to violence, it didn't happen just because it didn't happen on our block. Young people might think selling drugs or picking up a gun is the only path, but it's not. Our neighborhoods belong to us, not the drug dealers, not the gangbangers, and certainly not to those who use guns to take innocent lives. I want to challenge each of us tonight. When you go home, look at your children, hug them, kiss them, thank God they're still here with you, because the parents are Manisha, Davion, and Cash, that is no longer possible. Let their lives be a call to action. Let's not wait for another tragedy to move us. The time for change is now. Now, we must work together to make a difference. These kids were killed last Thursday, and nobody's talking about it. Thank you.
Alma Gregory.
Yes, if, if I may, because one thing I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna sit up here and I'm not gonna play politics with these kids. We have spoke on it. These children, Ms. Shanklin, his last name is Brady, first of all. And before I left, see the change, and let's go for everybody. The change that we talking about, it don't involve the police, it don't involve nobody who ain't from our community, it involves us. That's the problem. We keep coming up here, we keep talking about what's going on in our community, instead of turning to our own people saying, stop this. We coming up here for a show, that's why ain't nothing get done. When I came from, when I came in here, guess where I was coming from? An HBCU college fair, where these people are working hard in our community to get kids to do something else. I didn't see anybody else in there. See, the real work is out there. It don't matter who sit up here in these seats, Ward 2, Ward 3, or whatever Ward, the work is in our community. If we want to see change, wait, I'm not here for no applause. I'm not here for no, it's my time, Ms. Shanklin. I'm not mad at you, I'm not mad at you, but this had been coming, because that's my, that's my little guy, I coached him all his life. These kids, these, this is not, this is our community, and we not gonna play that. We not gonna, we not gonna, we not gonna make it political about our community, because that's what this is about. It's political, because if we truly cared, when all these events going on to help our young men, the outlet, better life, better living, who we been fighting for to get out in our streets, people who are from our community, no disrespect for people who don't, we get resistance, but I ain't see you come up here and say nothing. This ain't the first triple murder. We had another one on 10th Street, I didn't hear a word from nobody, but I was out on scene, right there with that young lady, holding that mama. I been on the phone with these folks, trying to get them money, trying to help them, been at the funeral home. So what I, I've been a thousand funerals of these young, a lot of these funerals for these young people, but I ain't seen very many of us out there. When we out in our community cleaning up, trying to get these houses done, I don't see them. When we gotta go, when I gotta go through the alleys and talk to homeless people and educate them on where the service is at, I don't see you, I don't see no help. But this issue happens, now everybody want to be political about it. We know what happened, people have been speaking out on it, it's a very touchy situation in our community with those families. All of us know each other, all of us have, have, I'm, I'm, this, this is the privilege that I got, all of us, all of us, all of us, but I'm, I'm, I'm not even addressing you at this point, I'm addressing our community. All of us have lived in this community, grew up in this community, those kids know each other. I'm, I understand that, and I coached, and I coached him all of my life, and I know them too.
Ms. Shanklin, Ms. Shanklin, Ms. Shanklin, please, please.
I know them too.
Thank you.
So that's what we have to do in our community. No disrespect to anybody on the barbecue, air, or whoever, uh, 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 uh. If you don't live there, don't have such a harsh opinion about what's going on in our community. Please, because every week we come up here, we want to bash the police, yeah, we got some issues that we, that we can handle, but I need them to go through the process, right? So we can figure out if it's working or not working. When I pull the complaint process, zero, zilch. It ain't gonna get fixed by coming up here talking about it. Send them through the proper process like we supposed to, and if that process is broken, we'll fix it. That's how we gotta do it. But coming up here every time, be up, but see, this, this, this is, this is the thing, this is the thing. You gonna have your chance to be up here, but it ain't today. This is my time, and it's my, it's my, it's, I got the right to talk. We plan, we play, you get five minutes, and now your time is over. We plan with our community, plan politics with our community, and I'm not gonna play it. I know these young people, I'm out there with these young people, I'm trying to help these young people, because when they need jobs and they need this and they need that, they, they calling me or somebody that I know, and we trying to help them get on the road. So coming up in here, making speeches and all this craziness, nah, that ain't gonna change our community, that's what we've been doing for the last 50 years, getting out here, working in our community. That's what's gonna change it, and that's something that me and a whole lot of people do every day, but we don't see very many of the young people when it's time to do the work. When the cameras is on, that's when we want to come around, but when it's off, and, and, and this ain't no disrespect to you, because when you called me at 7 o'clock at night about just some grass, I came, right? And I'm always gonna do that, but I'm always gonna do that, but it doesn't require a response. But I came, but I came, but I came, but I came.
Alma Gregory, you good? All right, Mr. Clerk, next speaker.
Rosanna Polito.
I'd like to start off by reading a letter I wrote to the Illinois Times. Letters to the editor on September 28th, 2025. Congratulations, Illinois Times. Congratulations on your longevity and success. While Fletcher Farrar and I have political views that couldn't be farther apart, I must say I appreciate so much his professionalism. When I see Fletcher in public, he's friendly and cordial. As we wade through trying times in political discourse, I am pleased to know that it is possible to care enough to be kind. Sincerely, Rosanna Polito. After watching last week's city council meeting and watching different alderwomen opining on what they were upset about, centered around the way people are treated or discriminated against, I decided to speak out. You all took an oath of office, you all took an oath to the Constitution, to which you swore to uphold, and then, in front of God and everyone, proceeded to deny me, a woman of Mexican descent, and my ancestors are the very indigenous people you claim to want to honor, you denied me my First Amendment rights in front of the horseshoe, and not one of you who took an oath to the Constitution to uphold it spoke up. It says on the city of Springfield website that the council's policy is, it is the policy of the city council that all members abide by federal and state law. You didn't, and there was no repercussions for your erroneous actions because you defied federal law. All of you who took the oath to defend the Constitution and later threw my lawyer at the American Center for Law and Justice, he sent you a demand letter and simply asked for a public apology, which I never got, one from Alderwoman Conley. You might look at this as an apology, but what it really is, is a lesson in leadership, leading by example. When you were wrong, admit it, apologize, learn from it, and move on. That's what everyday people are yearning for, leaders who are real and authentic. Even the chairwoman, who was in fact in charge of the meeting, remained silent about my First Amendment rights being violated. I wish at the next meeting she would have opined about the error that was made and about the behavior that was displayed, like she did last week, but it's obvious to everyone why the apology never happened, because I do not hold the same political ideology as these two alderwomen. Therefore, the error was totally ignored by the so-called leaders in the Springfield City Council. Another discrepancy I'd like to speak about at this meeting is my friend who came to a meeting had a small sign in the crowd that said, "We support Abigail Wheeler." She was reprimanded by an alderman. "No signs allowed," he said, "but last week I saw homemade signs in the crowd, in the crowd. I didn't hear an alderman reprimand them." Again, watching the double standard in the city council meeting. Lastly, concerning the ordinance Springfield wanted to pass about fire department liftoffs, Lakeisha purchased my alderwoman, never returned my call. She was my alderwoman at that time. I called because my life worked, to a great extent, has been with senior citizens and caring for them. I was ready to share my thoughts and experience of over 20 years of being in the senior living industry. Lastly, I want to say, instead of grandstanding for Indigenous People Day, you had the opportunity to uphold the constitutional rights of a woman of Mexican descent whose descendants are indigen people, indigenous people, and you failed. Truth is stranger than fiction. Note to self, the Springfield lame stream media was here that day, and none of them covered the fact that my First Amendment rights were violated. They only notice when it hap-
Thank you, Ms. Polito. Councils, any need for executive session?
No need.
Motion adjourned. We have a second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, adjourn.